Welcome to the December 4th, 2017 edition of the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission. Would you please join me in pledge our allegiance to our flag?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, every being just.
Thank you. At this time with the recording secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lanson.
Here.
Commissioner McMahon.
Here.
Commissioner Nichols.
Yes.
Commissioner Pletcher.
Here.
Chair Newman, absent.
Thank you. Next, we have public comments. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on issues that are within the commission's purview and not on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. I do not have any cards specifically for public comments. Is there anyone who wanted to speak to public comments? Very good. We'll move on to the next item. Written comments, announcements, and continuances. Mr. Shepherd, do you have some comments for us?
Yes, actually, we have no written comments or announcements tonight. We will have a continuance, but because of the noticing for the public hearing, the commission will need to open the hearing and then vote on the continuation.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. And with that, we will move into the public hearings. With the recording secretary, please call case 6A.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6A regarding case DPMJ 2016-70412. Applicant Lexus Topa Motors, Inc., request to amend condition number 33 of DPMN 2013-70534 to allow light standards to remain on rooftop of a newly-built auto dealership. Location 3755 Auto Mall Drive.
Thank you. And as Mr. Shepherd said, this has been requested for continuance to a date uncertain. So unless there are any questions or additional comments by Mr. Shepherd, do you have something to add for us?
Well, just for the record, the applicant has requested continuance of the subject case to consider the alternate lighting options for the rooftops portion of their storage, vehicle storage structure. And staff will continue meeting with the applicant to discuss revisions of the project lighting. And after a further review, if it's determined that a planning commission hearing is required, the item will be scheduled for an earliest available meeting date. And staff is therefore recommending that the item be continued to a date uncertain.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Do we have any questions for Mr. Shepherd, or if not, a motion to continue the case to a date uncertain? Mr. Pletcher.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to continue case number DPMJ 2016-70412, Lexus Topa Motors, Inc., follow the staff's recommendation to continue it to a date uncertain.
Thank you, Mr. Pletcher. Any further comments? If not, would you please vote?
Motion passed 4-0.
Thank you. And with the recording secretary, please now call case 6B.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6B regarding case PPD 2017-70044. Applicant Tunny Construction, request to allow encroachment into 25% and steeper natural terrain in conjunction with the construction of a single-family dwelling. Location 842 Combs Avenue.
Thank you very much. And this evening, we have a presentation by our senior planner, Pam Leopold. Ms. Leopold, please tell us what you can about this project.
Thank you, Acting Chair Nichols. Good evening, members of the commission. The request is to construct a single-family dwelling, including encroachment into natural terrain of 25% and steeper gradient. The vicinity map shows the location of the project site. It's, the address is 842 Combs Avenue. This is east of Page Lane, west of the 23 freeway, north of Benson Way in the Greenwich Village tract, and it's south of an undeveloped park site, which is the southwest quadrant of the Caneo Creek Park. The aerial photo shows the project site. It's essentially, majority of it is over 25% in steeper terrain. There is an easement located on the property. It's the Cuyegus Municipal Water District easement. And essentially, this is a manhole cover here for the entrance to that easement, or access to the easement. The lot, as I mentioned, is part of the Greenwich Village tract. It was approved in 1923. It's one of the oldest tracts in the city. There was a lot line adjustment in 1989. And essentially, that lot line adjustment was a condition of the precise plan of design approval for the adjacent property at 830 Combs Avenue. It allowed for a redesign of the frontages for both of those lots, 842 and 830 Combs Avenue. The characteristics of the lot, essentially, it's 0.17 acres. It's a legal lot of records, so the city needs to allow for reasonable use of the property. The general planned land use is very low-density residential. And the zoning is RO, which is single-family estate. As I mentioned before, the lot contains a 15-foot-wide easement for Cuyegus Municipal Water District. The average slope of the property is 46%. This is a view of the lot as from Combs Road looking southeast. You can see the adjacent property at 830 Combs Avenue. It's a two-story dwelling. And then the properties further to the south, which are up on Benson Way. Again, this is a, shows a site plan of the property. There is, the property over here at 830, there is a wall that is encroaching a little bit into the subject site. And essentially, this is the Municipal Water District easement, 15-foot wide, that's on the eastern portion of the property. The grading plan shows essentially a driveway that would be coming off of Combs Avenue. And essentially, in order to try to minimize the slope of the driveway, 15-foot is the maximum slope, the applicant is requesting an easement from the Caneo Recreation and Park District in order to minimize the slope and make certain that it's less than 15%. This grading plan cross-section shows the, a cross-section through the middle of the house. Most of the cut, the grading, is on the lower portion next to the driveway. And there's very little cut on the upper slopes because there's three separate building pads that are stepped into the hillside. As you can see here, the grade of the driveway is approximately 14.2%, which is less than 15% maximum percent. This aerial shows the access plan and site details for the site. Again, the property is outlined in red. And essentially, the Municipal Water District easement is along a portion of the property. The driveway easement that the applicant is requesting will come off of Combs Road and essentially onto the park site property to access the driveway, or to the garage. This area that's shaded here is essentially a turnaround area that's conceptual in nature at this point. But Public Works Traffic Division is requiring that area to be utilized as a turnaround area and for the applicant to provide a paved turnaround. Previously, there was a lot line adjustment, as I mentioned, and this was the original design for Combs Avenue. It had a cul-de-sac design. When this house at 830 Combs Avenue was constructed, or was requested for construction, the applicant asked that the cul-de-sac design be deleted. And essentially, that was in order, as far as we know, to provide better developability or better buildable area for this lot, simply because the house then would have had to been located further up the slope. And essentially, the same with this property. If the cul-de-sac was previously constructed, the house would have been further up the slope. This is an architectural rendering of the proposed design. Essentially, it's the living area, which is on the upper two floors, and the garage, which is on the lower floor. This is showing the north, or the front elevation, as viewed from Combs Avenue, where the garage is on the lower floor. And then the two upper floors show the livable areas. This feature is an entry feature, and it has a clear story window on both the north and the east side. On this west side, you can see the, or on the east-west side, you can see the clear story window again, and then the three stairwell windows. This is a portion that's requested for a setback reduction. It's approximately 14 feet in width. And the remaining portions of the house are all over 15 feet setback from the side of 830 Combs Avenue. And this is the east elevation. This is the main floor plan. It's pretty much the livable areas. And this is the second floor plan, composed mainly of bedrooms. With regard to the grading, over 2/3 of the lot is greater than 25% slope. And the encroachment into the natural 25% slope and steeper is unavoidable. The applicant is proposing 0.04 acres of encroachment. It amounts to about 23% of the lot. And in looking at the export, 245 cubic yards of, it should be export, is needed, resulting in 17.5 truck trips. The city needs to allow reasonable use of the property. The applicant has worked with staff and incorporated our recommendations. The applicant has provided multi-level building pads, has stepped the retaining walls. There are earth tone colors and materials. There is a color board that was given to the commission for the commission's review. And the applicant is utilizing hip and gable roof elements, with the full pitch roof acting as an extension of the downslope of that hillside area. The proposed dwelling is 2,450 square feet. There are 12 homes in the vicinity that range from approximately 1,186 square feet to 2,298 square feet. The design is consistent with the precise plan of design guidelines and hillside development standards. And grading is minimized with the step pads, and the majority of the lot is undeveloped. With regard to the environmental review, the project does qualify for a 15303 Class 3 category exemption in accordance with the CEQA guidelines. And this section allows for limited numbers of small structures, including a single-family dwelling. Overall, the recommendation is that the planning commission approve a PPD 2017-70044 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. While this concludes staff's presentation, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Leopold. Do we have some questions from the commission for Ms. Leopold? Get rid of my PDF here, so I can see who's coming up on the list. Mr. Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Pam.
Hi.
In looking at the design, I know we're talking, there's the easement that would be contemplated by the additional turnaround, but there's an existing easement actually on the property, correct?
That is correct. It's a Cuyegus Municipal Water District easement, 15-foot width.
Is that easement going away, being modified?
No, it has a 24-inch diameter pipe in it. It's not going away. It's very valuable to the district.
Property is going to be put over that, and all the existing terms of whatever the easement is would stay in place?
That is correct. There can be improvements at, like flatwork improvements over the easement, but there cannot be structures over the easement. So that truly limits the applicant's ability to develop the property.
Okay. And I'm assuming as part of this process, there is no structure that would be over the easement area?
That is correct.
In terms of the, I know at the top, there's a V ditch or something that would be, I guess, created on the backside of where the property would be?
There will be drainage improvements, probably required by Public Works Division once they review the grading, paving drainage plan.
Okay. Because that was my concern, is looking at, obviously, there's the encroachment with the neighbor, is that the water that comes down that side of the property, to the extent there is the encroachment from the neighbor, exactly how is that all going to be looked at in terms of who's responsible for water to the extent it's flowing and where it's coming from?
Yeah. There will be an erosion plan, and as I said, probably some drainage improvements required by Public Works Division.
Okay. I noticed there was a resident, Mr. Walsh, I believe, that submitted some issues and questions. Did staff meet with him at all to go over his concerns?
We did call him immediately after his concern was received. And I did advise the, Mr. Walsh, that essentially, the Building Division and the Public Works Division will review Soil's report, and will be looking at structural concerns with regard to the building and the walls. Some of the retaining walls, as you understand, were part of the building walls. So there will be much study by Building Division and Public Works in reviewing those improvements.
And then last, I noticed we didn't get any supplemental information, so I'm assuming Mr. Walsh's comment was the only community comment we got.
Staff did receive some other questions from some of the other neighbors, some on Benson Way, and some on Combs Avenue. And they seemed to appreciate the information. Some of them may speak tonight. I don't know.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I had to get back to, scroll back quickly to be able to put in my quest. Thank you very much for the presentation. Let's see. Can you just walk me through to clarify again the turnaround easement portion of it? From what the staff report says, we had an intended cul-de-sac that was supposed to go in there with Greenwich Village. It was abandoned in 1989 with the lot line adjustment. I guess why now, all things considered, why now are we needing to put this in? Because if this house was never being built, you know, would this ever, would this, you know, new turnaround easement, I'm just confused as to why now, and why are we putting that turnaround easement, essential, the additional cost, whatever it may be, on the applicant, when this was something that was either abandoned in 1989, or should have properly, I would think, been addressed in 1989?
Essentially, in 1989, the developer of 830 Combs Avenue was not the owner of the road easement, or the road itself, that property. It was, I think it was property Q or something like that. So he didn't really have control over it. At the time, we did research this concern a little bit more. The difficulty is trying to allow for reasonable use of both of these lots. And back then, it was found that by placing, by removing the cul-de-sac, the lots then could be developed closer to the road and not encroach further up into the hillside area. At this point in time, the owner of the subject site, which is being requested for improvement, does own that road area. And it's sort of like the last man in. This is the last lot to be developed on Combs Avenue. And essentially, since the applicant is asking for an easement onto park property to allow for driveway access, it makes sense to widen that area a little bit more and provide a turnaround area that can be utilized by all of the neighbors and any other vehicular traffic coming down Combs Avenue. So it's a best, better design for the community for that area.
Okay. I just, I was just curious, because it conflicted at times, and then it just seemed very strange to me, we abandoned it, but now it's back. And regarding condition 19 on, it'd be staff report page nine, notifying adjacent property owners in advance of construction work? I just was curious, I think I know the answer, but I want to ask it anyway, how many feet away from the premises would that notification be required for? Typically, we do something like 300, you know, 300 feet away, you have to give notification, or 500 feet, 700 feet?
I'm sorry, this is condition you said 19?
Condition 19 restrictions. There's a line of notifying adjacent property owners in advance of construction work?
I have a condition 19 that says construction noise reduction measures. Is that the one referring to?
Within the paragraph, yeah.
Yeah. Typically, we want to minimize noise. And it's really something that, just for good construction purposes, we want to not have machinery idling.
Oh, no. I understand. Sorry to interrupt. I understand that. I just, how adjacent property owner, how far does he have, you know, the applicant have to go to inform people there'll be construction going on? Is it just 830 Combs Avenue? Is it up the street on Benson Avenue?
Well, for the Public Works conditions, there are specific conditions with regard to notifying neighbors typically. There's a construction meeting that typically is held prior to, it's condition number 15, 52 on page 18 of the staff report.
Okay.
That allows for 300 feet within the subject property to notify neighbors. And at that point in time, any neighbors that have concerns about the pending construction can be informed at the meeting.
Just a moment. Let me look over my notes here. I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pletcher. Any other questions from commission for the staff? Okay, I have a couple of questions here. Ms. Leopold, when we have a, this being one of our legacy areas in town, one of the oldest communities in town, I guess it was 1923 when the tract was approved, and we've got homes that are maybe not quite that old, but some of them are quite old. The houses in that area are 1940s, 50s, something in that area. When you assess a project, a proposed design like this, where it's now 2017, 60, 70 years past when these homes were built, and you're assessing it based on current guidelines for design, how do you measure that in comparison to the existing homes, which are 70 years old, and perhaps don't even come close to what current design is, very much an eclectic neighborhood? And now you have a very contemporary proposed design, which, you know, looks wonderful, but is there some, also some assessment, not only with what the current guidelines are, but what the existing neighborhood looks like?
In this case, it's difficult, because it is an older neighborhood. And the design is such that it meets the precise plan of design and colors, materials, and earth tone colors. The project does step up the hill with the pads, and the applicant has chosen more a contemporary design. But then again, it's difficult to compare that architecturally with the existing homes. Most of the other homes are smaller. They're actually legal non-conforming structures, because they only have a one-car garage. And most, as you say, most of those homes were built in the 1950s. Given the overall design of the property, or of the building, it meets, as I said, it meets our precise plan of design guidelines. We can't hold the applicant to any specific architectural design, but it blends well in the neighborhood with the colors and with the overall massing, which is pushed back into the hillside.
Okay. So if I could kind of summarize what I heard, you're saying that you still have to rely on the policies and guidelines that we have on the books today?
That is correct.
And there's no requirement, per se, that the proposed design has to be but you're still balancing it on the guidelines and policies that are the requirements that really underlies whether you can approve it or not?
That is correct. Because if it was in a more recent neighborhood or more recent construction, then we would be looking for some compatibility. In this case, it's difficult to compare. We've got older, non-conforming structures, and we've got a new design that meets current standards.
Okay. Let me get to my other questions here for just a second. Excuse me. Oh, another question I had, if I understand this correctly, that really the only reason that this body is reviewing it is because of the 25% slope encroachment. If that were not the case, what would the applicant, I guess, the steps that they would be going through for approval? Is it just you as a staff member would be assessing this and determining whether it meets the requirements or not? Is there a formal administrative process? What would it be if not for the 25% encroachment?
It would simply be an administrative process.
It would be, okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And then if I understand correctly, the, going back to the turnaround issue that Commissioner Pletcher brought up, in 1989, there was some adjustment, but the proposal now is not a requirement of the Fire Department, but instead just the Traffic Division that just looking for a little extra space to turn around at the end of the street, just to avoid some unnecessary congestion. Is that correct?
That is correct. It'll be a benefit to the overall neighborhood. It'll allow for delivery trucks to have an easier time to negotiate. And the applicant does not want people turning around in his driveway either, or other homes do not want that to happen. So providing a little bit extra turnaround area at the terminus is a benefit to the overall neighborhood.
Okay. And I noticed the, well, I guess the northern half of Combs Road is like a dirt parking lot. A lot of the neighbors will park there in that area. Is there any future plan for that to be paved or perhaps incorporated into the street for use, people going both directions?
My understanding is that the Park District will be going forward on the design of the park, but they want to hold neighborhood meetings. And those meetings, the Park District is asking for input from the neighbors, possibly even next week, they want to begin asking neighborhood for their thoughts on developing the park. My understanding, it would be more of a passive park, and there probably will be some consideration by the Park District for a small parking lot or an area where cars can park next to the facilities.
So is that current unpaved area part of the Park District property?
It is. That's correct. It's under the Edison easement. Those are transmission lines. And there is certain, there's a certain area there, yes, for people who've parked there. But it's not, there is no specific design that the park has provided at this time. There's a conceptual design. And my understanding is that Traffic Division will not allow parking on Page Lane. So the Park District will probably give some consideration to a parking area, a small parking area.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. I see Commissioner McMahon has a question.
Thank you. The road itself, I understand, is privately owned?
That is correct. Combs Avenue from the intersection of Page Eastern to the property is private.
And is it owned by the applicant?
That is correct.
What is the applicant's responsibility as far as maintenance of the road?
It is a private street. Public Works is here. They can comment on that. But it is a private street. And if the applicant were to bring it up to city standards, then the city would consider ownership of that portion.
What would it be that they would have to do to bring it up to city standards?
There's a long list of things that are needed. And I'll ask Brad Bussell with the Public Works Department to maybe expand on that, the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Could you please give us your official title for the record, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Senior Civil Engineer in the Public Works Department.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, if they wanted to have the city take that over, they would have to bring it up to standards, full standards of the city, which would be curb, gutter, sidewalk. It'd have to be widened to a full city street per the city standards, and then we would consider taking that street over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bussell. Any further questions? Okay. I see no other Commissioners with questions. So at that point, I'm going to move into the public speaking section. And first, we have our applicant, Mr. John Tunny. Mr. Tunny, you are entitled to 15 minutes to share your thoughts, comments, hopes, desires. But please, if you did, give your name and city residence for the record and use as much of that time as you like, sir.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chair. My name is John Tunny. My address is 1005 El Segundo Drive. That's in Thousand Oaks, 91362. And Mrs. Leopold went through my proposal fairly detailed and explained things clearly. We are hopeful and are trying to develop this property, to put a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath single-family house on the property. And due to the constraints of the lot and the easements involved and a portion of the lot and existing retaining walls migrating into my lot, the design constraints got involved. And I worked along with planning and came up with the design you currently see. And it is a little bit more of a contemporary design, but that's just a design that I like and that's what I was after. There was some concerns or mentions about the street, about the turnaround. And as I understand it, my rear patio design and retaining walls and the structural integrity of those walls. And I was asked by planning to have my structural engineer attend the meeting, which he has, Doug Finley. He's with Orion Structural, to answer any questions. And I'm here as well to answer any questions or concerns that the Commissioners may have for the development. I guess that's about all I can say at the time.
Guess if I had my microphone on, it'd be a lot better. But they're both available here for questions if you have any questions for them. Anything else, Mr. Tunny?
I don't think so.
Okay. Mr. Finley, just want to make sure you had nothing formal to prepare. You're welcome to speak. You can participate in this 15-minute session, or if you're just here for questions, that's fine as well.
I haven't prepared anything.
Okay. Okay. And just for the record, Mr. Finley just mentioned he's available for questions. Okay, with that, Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or Mr. Finley, the structural engineer? Okay, well, I will have a question for Mr. Finley. If you could, if you could, just again, for the record, state your name and city of residence, please.
My name is Doug Finley, Thousand Oaks, California.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. We did get a comment from one of the neighbors up above on Benson. And I would imagine if I lived up there, I would exercise some concern as well with understanding that the slope below A house, my house, was going to be compromised, whatever term that they want to use in the development process and perhaps long-term. Could you just give us an idea of what you foresee in the development of this project? Some of the things that you have assessed? And, you know, what type of a soil? Is it a stable soil? Are there any concerns that you've seen that you're going to have to deal with? And either through the construction process or long-term, once the project has been completed?
Yeah. Well, the hillside appears to be quite stable. As a matter of fact, as you move up slope, the underlying bedrock appears to surface quite quickly. And so once you get about, less than halfway up the hill, I think, we're probably about surfacing the bedrock. As we go towards the bottom of the slope, the bedrock is quite deeper. As far as the actual design of the retaining walls, I think the, I haven't done a full analysis yet. We haven't actually started the project. But I think the homes up on Benson Way, I think that the, they're far enough away as to where the footings, the foundations of those structures up on Benson Ways, they shouldn't influence our retaining walls at all. By the time the loads travel that far downhill, they'll be quite deep. And as far as the actual design of the retaining walls go, whether we use CMU, which are like the gray masonry unit bricks that you often see on walls like that, or we do like a cast or a porton place type retaining wall, that'll be a design issue that we'll make a decision once we start doing the design. And I anticipate as we go up the slope, the back part of the house, it's going to be digging into the hillside, those will most likely be conventional type footings. We won't have to go deep on those because, like I say, we're into the competent soil. Towards the front of the house, where would be where the driveway is, the bedrock is a little deep there, and we might end up doing like a pile or caisson design towards the front of the house.
So is the predominant soil nature of the building site itself, the footprint, more of a topsoil type of condition where the bedrock is not until you get up the hill up above the house?
It varies a little bit, yeah. But the hillside is stable. But like I say, as you start walking up the hill, the bedrock is much more shallow than it is at the base of the hill.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Finley. Let's see, the next and last card I have is from Robbie Lalonde, or Lalonde, please forgive me. You're welcome to come. You would have five minutes to speak. You could join us at the lectern and then, again, just state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
It was also wondering if it would be possible for you to bring up that overhead photograph? If you could, I can show you. But you want me back here?
Yes, if you could use the microphone. Again, state your name and city residence for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Robbie Lalonde. My husband's name is Arnold Johnson. And we are the owners of 818 Combs Avenue, which is right next to 830. So I just wanted to point out, so this is actually my...
If you could go ahead and point out, but anytime you're speaking, we have to have you behind the microphone. So just point at what you can. Oh, okay, here we go. We've got a portable mic.
Thank you.
Ready to go. Full-service operation here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is my vehicle here. This is our front yard. This is my husband's vehicle here. Our driveway is a little bit too short for both of us to park in it. So my husband used to park on the dirt right in front of our home until he got a ticket because it's too close to a fire hydrant, which is actually on our lot. So he is now one of those people that parks over here, and when we have company, that's the only place for them to park as well. So I have a question about how this turnaround will affect our ability to park here without having to go, I don't know where else we would go. But then on the other hand, this is going to be where we now have just an unobstructed view of the park. Will have maybe parking there? I don't know. So that's just a concern, what this is going to look like. I do understand the need for the turnaround, though, because our garbage trucks and the fire truck that I've seen come in, they have to back up every time they get trash. And this is so narrow, you can't even pass those trucks when those kinds of things are in process. So I'm really anxious to see what this would look like. What are we now going to be looking at from the front of our home? And then I had a couple of other things I wanted to say. First of all, the size of the homes that you have is incorrect when you said 1,100 and some feet. When we bought our home in 2014, it was 840 square feet. The home also right here is about the same. We have since added a bathroom, which added about 70 square feet, so we're a little over nine right now. So that was just one thing I wanted you to know. There are a lot of small homes for whatever that's worth. And also, I didn't, we didn't, we weren't told when we first bought our house, but there was a debris flow that came down here and took out this corner of the home that we live in. And the only way I found about it was by doing a little research on building permits and saw that there was a request to rebuild. And that was a fatality. There was a woman sleeping there, and when that flow came down, she was killed. So we didn't know that at the time. So that again, of course, everyone who comes to our house and goes in the backyard and looks up at that slope, they all go, "Oh," you know, because it does look scary with the construction that's there now. But we were encouraged that that was a debris flow, and because of the construction that's there's now and things that have been done, that we don't expect that kind of thing to happen again. But of course, this is, you know, it's just an area that could be, I guess, dangerous. So I think that's, I think that was all I had to say, just mainly that we're concerned what all is going to be transpiring here for a while, what this is going to look like, how it's going to affect our ability to park near our own home. And I don't imagine, is there ever any way that that fire hydrant could be on a property line? Isn't that where fire hydrants are supposed to be installed? Are there any rulings about that at all? Does anybody know?
Ma'am, once you're through, well, the staff is taking notes and they will try to address questions.
Okay.
And we'll try to do the best we can to get those answers for you. Did you have any other answer questions at this time?
No, I think that was it, and I probably took up more of my time already.
No, no, no. You've got 42 seconds left.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I really think that that's it. And we're certainly not opposed to the development. I think it's going to be nice for all of us that more of us are working on our homes and really, you know, bringing them up to what we would like to see in our neighborhood. So it's certainly not that. But I just am a little concerned to how this is going to impact our quiet little country lifestyle there, where we just look out across open land.
Very good. Thank you. I just do have a comment for you, and I guess maybe just reiterating what Ms. Leopold said, was that the Park District has some plans coming up with what will be across the street. So certainly, if they don't reach out to you, you know, give Mr. Herr a phone call and say, "Hey, when is this meeting? I want to be part of it." And they'll be sure to get in touch with you about that.
Okay.
But we'll let staff respond to your other questions. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I let her go without any other questions. Does anybody have questions? Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to staff with Ms. Leopold and perhaps Mr. Bussell, if you could be prepared for the turnaround question, to address what, either comments or questions from the Commission or speakers, to point us in the right direction.
Thank you. With regard to the house sizes, the houses do range in size. The smallest of the houses are on Combs Avenue. They range in size from 1,186 square feet up to the larger homes on Benson Way, which are 2,298 square feet. So there is quite a range there of house sizes. With regard to the design of the turnaround area, I'd like Brad Bussell again with the Department of Public Works to offer a few comments, because this will be, as I mentioned before, a part of the grading, paving, drainage plan. The Public Works will be plan checking. And the design will have to meet Public Works standards and also with Fire Department standards too for turnaround. standards and also with Fire Department standards, too, for turnaround area.
Mr. Bustle, if you could, and specifically addressing, you know, how that might impact parking, if there would be parking permitted on the turnaround. I know there's going to be a driveway coming off of that, so if you could perhaps clarify that for us, please.
Yes, Mr. Tunny's driveway is going to be coming off of the northern part of his lot. As far as the turnaround, it's going to be asphalt, there's not going to be curb, gutter, sidewalk, anything over there like that. It'll just be a straight extension of the street over there. We don't anticipate putting any no-parking signs up there. You want to have some clear turnaround area because you want to have an area for the trucks to turn around and make sure it's a functioning turnaround. But I don't see that there would be any, no parking restrictions on that area. As far as the design, the final design will have to be worked out with Fire Department and the applicant and Public Works. It may look like that, it may look a little different than that, but it'll have to be approved by the Fire Department and Public Works and the applicant.
Could you just clarify, because I've got some feedback from Ms. Leopold, that the Fire Department is not requiring a turnaround, so if they don't require them, would they still need to provide input on this, or is this truly just a traffic department issue?
I believe we would still seek Fire Department's turn, or their input on this. They may not have a lot of input, but we would still seek their input on this.
Okay.
As far as the fire hydrant location, that is, Ms. Lalonde is correct. Usually, a fire hydrant is placed at a property line. I'm not sure why this one was placed where it was at. It may have been there before the houses were built, I'm not sure, but that is something that Public Works can look into as far as doing a relocation. If we, it may be part of the park project, the park may have to have a fire hydrant, it may be with the park project, that fire hydrant may be able to relocate it across the street.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple commissioners here, but I'm going to first turn to our attorney, Mr. Patrick Heer, to clarify a few things, please.
Thank you. I'm not sure it's clarification or just to add some comments. You heard the questioning to Mr. Finley, and I just wanted to point out that as this project goes forward, if it's approved, there are so many other aspects of the project that need to be approved for the precise plan. So, if you look at the conditions that we have in the staff report, we have conditions 2, 21, 22, 32, 51, 55, 57, and also 59. And those conditions are, once he's got to do grading, if this project is approved, those grading plans need to be brought to Public Works and need to be reviewed. That type of design, which Mr. Finley has already articulated, he's obviously looked at the project and looked at the soil, but a soils report has to be submitted, and that's done by a state-certificated engineer that's got to certify the soils of a certain density, et cetera. So, I just want to point those out. And for condition number 59, as a condition precedent to him getting the authority to build, he needs to have that easement with CRPD. As Ms. Leopold stated, for the driveway to go into the current plan, to get that less than 50% slope, you need to have that easement over the CRPD property, and thus, the turnaround also is added to that. So, just for all of you, just understand that that condition number 59 does state that he needs to have that easement first before he gets further along into the project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Heer, I always appreciate your clarifying things for us. Okay, next I have Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. Mr. Bustle, if you wouldn't mind coming up, I wanted to ask an additional question about the turnaround, maybe to make our homeowner feel better. Do you anticipate how big it would be? Would it be possible to have somebody park there and still have room for a large vehicle to turn around? Or is it just not going to be big enough? Do you have any idea yet of the size of it?
I really don't have any idea yet. That's going to depend on the easement that Mr. Tunny gets from CRPD, the amount of easement that CRPD grants to him, and how his driveway design's going to work out. But I think that, right now, that is pretty flexible as far as the size, and if parking needs to be part of that, that, assuming there's enough easement, that probably could be made part of the design.
Is it something that the neighbor would want to approach the Park and Rec Department to discuss with them and voice their concerns?
I believe that would be a good idea. The area where everybody is parking right now is CRPD property, and I'm not sure that CRP, I know CRPD allows people to park on there, but that would be a good thing to clarify with CRPD that parking is still allowed over there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In furtherance of that issue, to the extent that area's going to be a park at some point, Ms. Leopold, do we know where the official parking lot for that park is going to go?
Staff does have a conceptual plan of the southwest quadrant, but it truly doesn't show a parking area, per se. It shows maybe a drop-off area, but as I mentioned, Traffic Division will not allow parking on Page Lane, so the Park District will need to consider some type of park, small parking area, to be incorporated in that park.
And it's not contemplated at the present where that would be?
No, it's not. As I mentioned, the Park District will be reaching out to the neighbors and asking for their input, and so certainly, if this is a concern, the neighbors need to advise the Park District that for some properties on Combs Avenue, it would be preferable to have parking nearby, if possible.
I think you made one other comment that I want to get clarification. Does the applicant own the entire street as well?
Only from the intersection of Page Lane and Combs Avenue eastward to the terminus.
Okay. If it's a private road, who owns the rest of it?
The city owns the rest of Combs Avenue, further to the west.
And just again, for my own, just understanding, the neighboring property, it looks like they're where the turnout was supposed to be, there's a circular area that's not up anymore, but there's a circular area that kind of goes through the middle of the house. Was that deeded to the homeowner, to its owner, or is it an easement, or what?
Actually, it's the assessor that has placed that line on the property, so for tax purposes, it could be that the assessor has looked at that. I think there may have been a so-called, not a mistake, but interpretation by the assessor's office that only a portion of that cul-de-sac was removed, and the other portion of that cul-de-sac needs to be deleted.
If I could just talk about that comment, we actually looked at that this afternoon, and that curved piece is actually owned by the property owner of the rest of that, whereas house extends over that. So, yeah, actually, if you look at both parcels, they are owned by the property owner themselves.
Because I was looking at the second page, and it has a different kind of boundary line as opposed to the...
Yes, that kind of curved piece down there, and that's something I think we need to look into as far as perhaps an error in the assessor's office, they never picked up that piece as part of that lot line adjustment several years ago, something we'll have to look back at.
But that doesn't affect the applicant in any way whatsoever?
No, that curved piece is owned by the actual property owner that the house actually extends out over.
I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Any further questions of the commission? Okay, hearing no further questions, then I will, I will actually go back to the applicant. Mr. Tunny, you have an additional five minutes to offer any rebuttals, clarifications, or offer any additional extra information. If you would, again, please, for the record, state your name and city residence.
John Tunny. I reside at 1,005 El Segundo Drive in Thousand Oaks. There's been a lot of discussion about the street, the proposed turnaround, et cetera and so on. It was my understanding that we were going to keep the issues separated. My PPD is specific to my property, and the street is another issue. The street and the turnaround, I'm in talks with the Parks District to try and alleviate and mitigate some of the concerns that have been raised here this evening. There has been nothing set formally as of yet. Mr. Hare?
Here.
Here, sorry. You had raised a condition, I think it was 59, referencing this very thing, and if I don't receive future easement, that my PPD becomes null and void. If I can present this correctly, and maybe I'm not, but the purpose of my, say, alternative design was with the driveway encroaching onto park property was for two things, aesthetics, but also gradient. As Ms. Leopold had stated, we can't exceed a 15% gradient for our driveway. As it sits now, I have an average of around 13.6 gradient. It may not mean a whole lot, but it's below the maximum. I can, with some design manipulations, keep my driveway on my property and eliminate any access need or requirement from the Parks District. That would require me to lower the project into the soil deeper, minimizing that 15% grade for my driveway. So, that condition perhaps shouldn't be in the conditions, because I can option that out if so desired. If, for some reason, I can't come to an agreement with the Parks District, it's not going to kill the deal for me. So, just to clarify that, if we can get that, you know, part of my, say, rebuttal to that condition.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Heer.
And thank you for your comment, because that is a very significant comment to me. I was referring to the condition as I see here, with the understanding that you understood those conditions. So, I want to read this condition fully, condition 59 that I mentioned. So, we have an understanding, and if we need clarity or if we need to have further discussion, we should have that discussion, that would be my recommendation at least. So, the condition number 59 reads, "End-of-street turnaround/hammerhead," that's the title. "The City of Thousand Oaks is of the understanding that the Conejo Recreation and Park District has agreed to grant to the applicant sufficient access easement for a properly-designed turnaround at the end of Combs Avenue to be approved by the city engineer. Applicant shall pursue securing said easement with the Conejo Recreation and Park District over CRPD's property to provide for a turnaround area for vehicles using Combs Avenue. The turnaround shall meet the minimum Ventura County Fire Department standards for a turnaround/hammerhead, which is 25 feet in width and 75 feet in length. The turnaround area shall be constructed prior to issuance of any building permits for the property. Should, for any reason, CRPD not grant an access easement, then the approval of PPD 2017-70044 shall become null and void." That is how the condition reads.
Correct.
If you're not agreeing to that condition, or especially that last part is what I think you're saying, then we need to have a discussion about that. That's my recommendation to the chair, so we have clarity on that issue, because that's why I brought all those conditions up earlier, is just to ensure that we all were on the same understanding as to what your requirements were. And I understand your position, if that's not what you're agreeing to, I'm glad you're saying it now instead of tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, let's, I mean, my recommendation is to have that discussion and work through this.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. Mr. Tunny, could you clarify then, just hearing this additional information? It's your position that your intent was, as you mentioned, for aesthetic and design purposes, to seek the easement across Park District property, make a more functional approach and less export of soil. But you're also indicating that if you can't do that, you do have an alternate, and you do have an option that's available to you, perhaps less desirable from aesthetic point of view, and obviously, increased grading could increase your costs. But that is an option that you would pursue, or perhaps are considering pursuing, if you can't get an easement, is that correct?
Correct.
And so, that's why you would not want to have that language that says null and void, because you feel you still have a viable option if you don't get the easement?
Correct, I do.
Okay.
And I did raise this, but it was best to be raised here. But yes, I do have an alternative if the Parks District does not want to grant the easement. And it was my understanding at Public Works and in discussions with Public Works, that if the Park District does not allow the easement, which I'm hoping for, that the project still could move forward and we could find a resolve for the requirements that Traffic's imposing.
Okay.
And one of those was an alternative design for the driveway. And it is doable, it's not aesthetically pleasing or as pleasing, but I can, I can still move forward.
And so, it would be your request, then, to not have the null and void language, but instead, leave it as an open, that you provide some option, obviously satisfactory to, I presume, Mr. Heer, the Director of Community Development at that point, if you could perhaps lead us in the right direction for something like that?
Well, if Public Works are planning, want to chime in on this, because I, again, was understanding that these conditions were already approved by you. So, with that comment, the option that, to me, would be that the last portion of paragraph 59, or condition 59, would read, "The turnaround area shall be constructed prior to issuance of any building permits for the property. Should, for any reason, CRPD not grant an access easement, then the applicant shall move to an option of creating a driveway that meets minimum city requirements that includes, that would include a driveway not exceeding 50% gradient." That's kind of a rough draft there, but that's what I would think would meet what you're saying, is you have an option to build a driveway that still meets that 15% or less gradient that would remain on your property that you currently own.
Correct, with the exception maximum, not minimum. You had said minimum.
Maximum, excuse me, thank you.
Outside of that, yes.
And Mr. Heer, since that particular condition is entitled a turnaround, and with his option being not having a turnaround, should we perhaps retitle that condition?
Again, I would say that it should be end-of-street driveway to home, or something of that nature. Again, I'm drafting here, but if Mr. Shepherd has any suggestions, that would be fine, too. But I agree that the turnaround/hammerhead should be stricken, if that's not going to happen with the private driveway going onto his property only.
Okay. And I know this is kind of a little crosshair between the staff discussion, but with Mr. Tunny still accessible, I'd like to ask it with him still here. In correspondence with Ms. Leopold, she indicated to me that the turnaround was not a requirement of the Fire Department, but it's set only to Traffic Division, and yet, the condition specifically, it requires approval of the Fire Department. So, I'm getting mixed messages here. Is the Fire Department involved, or is there not? My understanding, the fire code only requires a Fire Department turnaround if it's greater than 150 feet. I don't know that the street is, I didn't measure it exactly, but I'm just curious, you know, are they involved or are they not? Unfortunately, we don't have a Fire Department representative here to answer that question, so can anyone else answer that question?
I had discussions with the Fire Department. They did not require a turnaround, if that has any weight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tunny.
Sure.
Mr. Shepherd?
If I could just jump in here a little bit, the, actually, when I read this, as far as the turnaround, all it states is that it shall meet the minimum Ventura County Fire Department standards, not looking for, specifically for the Fire Department to approve it, it just sets as far as a standard, as far as the design component. And we may want to address this with Mr. Bustle, but looking and listening to, as far as what Mr. Heer is, as far as recommending, as far as the adjustment, as far as the condition, should it be the direction of the Planning Commission to go that route? I think that the language that Mr. Heer has suggested is appropriate for the commission.
Just a bias, because I'm familiar with the fire code, I'm sorry, but Fire Department turnaround minimum dimension for a bulb is 96 feet diameter, which is much larger than what this design is showing. So, that's why I say, if you're intending to meet those standards, it's going to far exceed what I see on these plans. So, that's why I'd like to get this clarified.
All right, and I think perhaps Mr. Bustle might have an opportunity to add some clarity to this issue, as it is a Public Works condition in here. And one would make the assumption if it calls out for that, that that would be the design component, so if there's something else, we should at least address that.
Mr. Tunny, I'm going to go ahead and let you sit down at this point, we're going to have a little discussion. If I do need to bring you back up, I'll invite you back up. Mr. Bustle, if you could please... up. Mr. Bustle, if you could please add some clarity, if you can.
I will give it a try. Mr. Shepherd is correct. It's a standard, we don't have a standard in Public Works for turnarounds. We use the Ventura County standards for our turnarounds. We can't always get them to work the way they have, especially in situations like this, where the property is limited. So we will start with the Ventura County standard for a turnaround, and then we'll work from that to try to get it to work as best as we can.
Okay. All right. Mr. Pletcher, I'll let you chime in here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to second, first, your comments, that I wanted to really knock this out and clarify it, because I was, I've been confused between the staff comments to what it says on the paper. And I understand Mr. Shepherd's comment that it's really just the standards in which seems to be here. We may have to play with some of that language, because based on the comments now, that we start with the Ventura County standards and then kind of alternate them to fit what we need, but maybe we need to strike the minimum Ventura County Fire Department standards. I don't know if that is the minimum, but I would bring it back to the Chair, because he is the fire code expert.
Sorry, Mr. Pletcher, I had the ear of Mr. Heer, if you could...
No, it's all right. I just was saying, I wanted to echo what you were saying about ironing out kind of the details of whether the Fire Department needs to be involved, doesn't need to be involved. Based on your comments, however, and what's on the paper, 59 says the turnaround shall meet the minimum Ventura County Fire Department standards, and you're saying the minimum standards are much larger than what the numbers are written here. So perhaps we need to play, I was suggesting we need to play with the language and maybe strike the word minimum, or strike the word, really, the Ventura County Fire Department standards, and just call them what the city's calling them, kind of their own standards. Just wanted to throw out that suggestion to the Chair, and while we have city staff here for response comments.
Thank you. And my suggestion would be in this is to, with the width, I guess, that's proposed, and I don't really see any dimensions there, but perhaps if we could maybe have some minimum dimensions at least to work with. And, Mr. Bustle, I know you're kind of trying to wade us through this process that's a little unfamiliar, because we do rely on the Fire Department for things like this, but if it's not their turnaround, and we're just trying to get a little extra space there, it seems like maybe the Fire Department turnaround is a little bit beyond what's expected, and yet I don't want to say, oh, well, whatever they can get is good enough. So is there something else that you can suggest that might satisfy the needs here?
I think it's a very good idea to remove the minimum Ventura County Fire Department standards. And I think it's very dependent on what Mr. Tunny comes back with from CRPD as far as the easement that he's going to get from CRPD. That will determine how much turnaround area you can get in that.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess that we're trying to navigate through this, appreciate it.
I don't think we can put specific numbers to this turnaround yet. We're going to be limited on what area we can work with, what property is at the end of this drive. It's very, very small back there, and we're going to have to custom-design something to get a turnaround that will, will at least make things better at the end of that cul-de-sac.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Bustle. I was having a quick conversation with Mr. Heer, who's rapidly trying to reword this condition for us. And I know that you were indicating that the dimensions written in the condition of 75 feet and 25 feet, if the road, if the Combs Road, Combs, Combs, I'm sorry, road itself was the 75-foot length, that means we only need a road that's 25-foot wide to meet that. And with the design that's proposed, I don't know if either staff can tell us, well, when the pavement is said and done, will it be 25 feet wide? Or do we even know that? Ms. Leopold, or Mr. Bustle, do we, do you know that? Well, I'll check with staff first, and then I'll, if not, perhaps lean on you as well, Mr. Tunny.
I'm sorry, you're asking for the final width of the pavement?
Well, the condition states a width of, well, some dimensions, I shouldn't say width, dimensions of 75 feet and 25 feet. If we use Combs Road, it's obviously greater than 75 feet, so that would satisfy that leg. But the 25-foot leg, if the road itself is at least 25 feet, is that adequate, or is it 25 feet outside the width of the road, or do we even know?
It would have to be 25 feet outside the width of the road, of the existing road that's there right now.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify. Okay, thank you. Mr. Heer?
Well, I think if we can have Mr. Tunny come back to the podium, I would appreciate that.
And Mr. Tunny?
I think for, my recommendation would be, when we, when staff was trying to create these dimensions here, I think they were looking at the option that he was going to get the easement from CRPD. And in your staff report, we do have an email from Tom Heer of CRPD, who indicates that the recommendation would be to grant that easement. Again, that is unknown at this time, because Mr. Heer does not have the authority to grant the easement. He has authority to recommend granting the easement to the CRPD Board. But if he's got to do the turnaround through the easement, I think the question would be whether Mr. Tunny would agree, the applicant would agree, to have the dimensions of 25 feet in width and 75 feet in length. That was envisioned to have this driveway that goes around the property, for lack of a better term, and turns into the property from the north, I guess. Don't get me on the directions. And see if he would agree to that. So we actually have those dimensions there. And then we would do the option that if he does not get the easement, then he would move to the second option, which would be to create a driveway that does not exceed 15% gradient.
Okay, okay. Mr. Tunny, did you understand that? And if not, ask questions. If so, please respond.
No, reasonable, perfectly reasonable. And the reason I questioned it initially was that, as you had noted, Mr. Heer is willing to move forward with it, but he doesn't have the authority to do it. It's the Board that does. And I didn't want to, you know, have my project hang out on a limb, in the event that the Board isn't as interested as Mr. Heer or myself. That's the reason I had raised the concern. And make no mistake, I have no issues with putting in a turnaround or an offset bulb. That's fine with me. It would actually enhance the property, and also the adjacent properties. So it's not that I'm opposed to doing it, it's that we're in discussions with the Parks Department, because, as I understood it, and as Ms. Leopold had stated, that traffic won't allow the Parks District for this future park to have parking on Page Lane, which is the perpendicular road to mine. On my street is where the proposed, or thought, parking for this future park will occur. And that's why I wanted to make these distinct and separate issues. That is, the PPD exclusive to the development of the property, and the street to be perhaps in discussion with the Parks Department. It's my understanding that they're speeding up their schedule for the development of this park. And if that is the case, that we can work together into accommodating future parking and/or offset bulb for the turnaround, and so on, at, you know, at that juncture. But to keep them separate was my goal and my intent.
Okay, appreciate that. Sounds like we do have a little interwoven mixture here, so we'll try to get through that process. Before you sit down, we've got a couple commissioners. I don't have a question for you, Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, hi. I'm looking at the letter from Tom Heer, and it says that the CRPD fully understands and is willing to grant an easement for driveway access. It says nothing here about a turnaround, so I just want a reassurance that when you've been talking, that the turnaround was part of this driveway that they're, that they've written the memo on.
We had a meeting at the city about a month ago, maybe not quite, and that was part of the discussion. Traffic was in attendance at that meeting. And the idea was to create some kind of an offset knuckle for ingress and egress off of Combs, but in addition to that, perhaps parking as well for this future park development. It's not stated in this email. This is, again, an informal statement that they are willing to move forward, at least in the discussion phase, but I don't have anything, any firm commitment to it yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, kind of that same issue. Again, we're trying to make sure that you don't have to end up redoing anything. We're trying to make sure this is all done as quickly as we can. In reference to that email from Mr. Heer, did he see the map that we're looking at with regard to what the turnaround would look like? Was there any discussion of actually the dimensions of what this turnaround would be?
Dimensions weren't noted. I drew something similar to what you're seeing here, not quite like this, but similar to it, at the meeting. And it was just acknowledged as, yeah, it's not a bad idea, but that it, there was no formality as to, yeah, that's a good idea, let's get it engineered and put it together.
Because I'm still trying to understand exactly from his wording, just like Commissioner McMahon pointed out. It's basically saying an easement for driveway access, which is, again, not the same as the turnaround issue, so I didn't know if there was really an understanding of exactly that issue as opposed to driveway access.
I have a drawing that he created, Mr. Heer. It's in here, if you just give me a second. His drawing was...
Excuse me, Mr. Tunny, just continue to look there. I just was going to state that there's more for the commission here. Mr. Heer pointed out earlier that it's incumbent upon the applicant to make arrangements with the Park District, and if he's successful, then his project goes one way. If he's not, then, based on the revised condition, then he can come up with an alternate. So I think we kind of have that part of it covered. So whether it's a driveway or turnaround, whatever those discussions were or will be, you know, community development will resolve that once they finalize that discussion. And then if that doesn't come to fruition, then Mr. Tunny can have the option of proposing an alternative option. So I think it's good to have this clarity, because we do want to make sure this condition is right. But just to point that out, it's, based on that revision, it's not mandatory at that point to come to agreement with that easement.
Good point, Mr. Chair. I yield, I agree.
I can illustrate what he had drawn. I don't have it here, but his wasn't an offset bulb, it was more of a swath of land.
Okay.
So he went straight across the top of Combs Avenue, which is park property, and just effectively put a parallel street on top of this for a certain distance. And that was it. There was no radius, it was just effectively widening the street for a certain distance.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Tunny. And, Mr. Heer, I know you've been busy over here trying to refashion this condition. Would you care to read that for us and for Mr. Tunny?
Sure. So, Mr. Tunny, this is what I'm suggesting as the condition now. And we would need, of course, your approval of that condition as rewritten. So the title would be end of street slash driveway. The City of Thousand Oaks is of the understanding that the Conejo Recreation and Park District has agreed to grant to the applicant sufficient access easement for a properly designed turnaround at the end of Combs Avenue to be approved by the city engineer. Applicant shall pursue securing said easement with the Conejo Recreation and Park District over CRPD's property to provide for a turnaround area for vehicles using Combs Avenue. The turnaround shall meet the minimum dimensions of 25 feet in width and 75 feet in length. Their turnaround areas shall be constructed prior to issuance of any building permits for the property. Should, for any reason, CRPD not grant an access easement, then the applicant shall move to an option of creating a driveway that meets the maximum city requirements, that, including that it does not exceed 15% gradient.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. Mr. Tunny, were you able to understand that? Do you concur or have questions?
Just one exception, if I may, and that is the term "prior." It's my goal, if possible, to keep the two subjects separate and distinct, and one not contingent upon the other. As I've stated, I have no issues with putting in the offset, or extending it, or working with Mr. Heer in creating a turnaround, a hammerhead, any verbiage you want to use. But I, it's my desire to keep them separate. The development of the structure and the street to be two separate issues, because the street doesn't have any, say, relevance to the structure, first off, but second off, the street has a direct and potential impact with a future park. So tying them together with my structure puts my structure in a vulnerability that I have no control over.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd, maybe you could clarify. I understand Mr. Tunny's concern, but I guess what we're trying to understand here is if, if it's not listed as "prior to," how would he know how to design his structure, whether it's option A or option B? Is there something that, from a community development perspective, that can be adjusted, or does it have to be prior in order to determine which pathway he's going to take?
Well, excuse me, all depends as far as how he comes up with the design of the driveway itself. If he was pursuing as far as a driveway that did not require the easement connection across there, and lower the pad, and so forth on that, it would involve quite a bit of additional engineering as far as the design on the project. And, you know, it really would hinge upon how much time would be utilized on the design on this, based on what design has worked with the CRPD on this. In other words, the, you know, we have a design right now that utilizes, I believe, a northern connection there with the easement across the, the access, right, to the, across the property to the driveway itself right now. If CRPD was not granting that easement, it would require some redesign, as Mr. Tunny had pointed out. But the question is as far as what magnitude that redesign would be, as far as how much lower the pad would have to be brought down to meet that maximum 15% gradient. So you're within that confine there. So obviously, the word "prior" certainly helps as far as guiding the direction that you're going to go as far as the design intent, but if you can design it currently to meet that, and then, you know, which way is more flexible as far as to design it directly off of Combs at this point, or to design it with that easement across there? I think those are the areas you'd have to look at as far as your timing goes.
I guess the timing for, say, the proposed design, which is the easement with the, it wouldn't take long at all for my civil engineer to draft up, you know, the site plan accordingly, negligibly speaking, I mean, hardly nothing at all. If I, for some reason, the Parks District refused to move forward. Initially, my design didn't include, or didn't have the option of the added easement. And my proposed driveway slope was slightly over the 15%. Somewhere in the neighborhood, if memory serves, around 16.5%. So I was close. But this option just seemed more aesthetically pleasing. As far as me reverting back to the previous design, again, quickly, very quickly, I mean, I could do that myself fairly fast. But maybe I'm not understanding completely what it is you're asking, but the term "prior to" is the only thing I'm having an issue with, because it, again, it kind of locks my proposed development, the PPD, with some unknown nebulous development, the street. And because it's unknown and nebulous, is outside of my control and purview. I don't have any control over the Parks District. So it kind of hamstrings me for what my initial application was, was to build the house.
Mr. Tunny, I'm going to go back to Mr. Heer for some... Mr. Tunny, I'm going to go back to Mr. Heer for some help in the clarification process of the wording of the condition.
So, Mr. Tunny, instead of the sentence, "The turnaround area shall be constructed prior to the issuance of any building permits for the property," we would rewrite it to be, "The design of the driveway shall be approved by city engineer prior to issuance of any building permits." The reason why I'm saying it that way is because we need to make sure that the design of the driveway is going to be incorporated, whatever option you have, into the house itself. So the concern is that you build the house, and then you haven't built the driveway, and then all of a sudden you go to build the driveway and you say, oh, we're at 16% gradient or 18% gradient, and now we're stuck with, okay, now I need to get a waiver of that problem. And so the concept would be that the city engineer would look at your design, assuming it's Option 2, for example, because we know the Option 1 was obviously done, so you guys could meet that, easily meet that 50% gradient. And so if it goes to Option 2, or either one actually, you would have to get that design approved. So where city engineer is looking at that gradient to ensure that if, unfortunately, you were at Option 2, you can still meet that maximum amount.
That sounds reasonable to me. I thank you.
Does that work for you, Mr. Tunny?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you for your time. Thank you for clarification, Mr. Heer. Thank you for working us through this. I appreciate it because I know it's been a lot of angst over a single condition, but I think it's important to get it right so we can make sure things move forward, especially with some of the issues at hand here. I see no other speakers here, so we have questions for Mr. Tunny. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this and now move forward into discussion amongst the commission and/or a motion. We're waiting through a couple technical difficulties here. Okay, here we go. All right. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, before we start discussion or a motion, can I ask our city attorney to repeat the change in number 59 so that it's all straight in our mind?
I was hoping to have a couple more hours to do that, since I read my chicken scratch, but I will do my best, and I apologize if I misstated or have to repeat myself. So the condition number 59, End of Street/Driveway. The City of Thousand Oaks is of the understanding that the Conejo Recreation and Park District has agreed to grant to the applicant sufficient access easement for a properly designed turnaround at the end of Combs Avenue to be approved by the city engineer. Applicants shall pursue securing said easement with the Conejo Recreation and Park District over CRPD's property to provide for a turnaround area for vehicles using Combs Avenue. The turnaround area shall meet minimum dimensions of 25 feet in width and 75 feet in length. The design of the driveway shall be approved by the city engineer prior to issuance of any building permits. Should for any reason CRPD not grant an easement, then the applicant shall move to an option of creating a driveway that meets maximum city requirements, including that it does not exceed 15% gradient.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. Commissioner McMahon, any further questions? Okay. I see no other commissioner comments, questions, or motions. Do I have a motion? Can I ask for a motion? Mr. Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Initially, with regard to a lot of these things, I always want to come back to exactly what this commission's being asked to do. It's not to look at the design too much, it's not to look a lot of things, it's to do exactly what's on the screen right there, which is to allow an encroachment into 25% in steeper natural terrain in conjunction with the construction of the dwelling that Mr. Tunny wants to build. I think you've satisfied all those requirements. You've answered a lot of questions. We've gone into a lot of areas that obviously were above and beyond that. But I want to say, first of all, I appreciate you going through this process and giving us a lot of the information. I also want to say that I really appreciate the staff's report and a lot of the detail and information and the maps and stuff like that. It was very, very helpful in terms of going and dealing with it and also helped my visit, actually, to the property to understand exactly where everything is located. There are some issues, obviously, we've gone over, so, and those I think will be handled as part of this process. I think it's a good structure, it looks like it's good for the neighborhood. I'm happy to also hear that Mr. Walsh's concerns were actually addressed. He's not here to complain, so I'm assuming he was content, hopefully, with whatever the communications were. And hopefully, you'll, Ms. Lallan, will get some communication with regard to your concerns. So with that, I would actually move to approve PPD 2017-70044 with the conditions indicated by staff and specifically their modification of paragraph 59.
Thank you. And I, before this popped up, I saw Mr. Pletcher's name there, it has since disappeared, but I presume, Mr. Pletcher, you still would like to speak?
We'll just do it old school, where I wave my hand at you and hope that you see me.
I'm good. Please proceed.
Well, I can't access my notes right now, so we'll just shoot from the hip. My largest concern in this project, and I'm going to certainly support the motion, my largest concern with this project was this turnaround. I didn't see how one affected the other. I understood the easement, I understood the aesthetically pleasing driveway and being able to do it a little bit differently to work on that grading issue. But I think we certainly addressed a lot of, through the great staff that we have, and thank you for them and their input, we've addressed a lot of my great concerns with this and fully fleshing out what is required. Because anytime you have the city needing to work with the Parks Department, needing to work with the county, needing to work with, you just want to get your house built. And to tie it up in government bureaucracy over and over again, to have you running around town, I don't think is necessary. I think we've come up with an answer that allows us to answer our questions and you to minimize that process and be able to get the house built sooner. And, you know, I think Commissioner Lanson's correct, we're really here to talk about grading, we're really here to talk about slope, you know, and city staff has addressed this, so I certainly will be moving to support the motion.
Thank you. And, Mr. Lanson, did you have anything more to add? Commissioner McMahon, anything? Okay. Before we move to vote, I'd also want to thank everyone, staff, and Mr. Tunny and Mr. Finley for being here tonight. I always find it a little bit of a challenge when we have projects in what I call our legacy areas, you know, you have older, I mean, 1923, it's got to be the oldest tract in the city or near to it. And we continue to have vacant lots that are buildable, and we try to accommodate the desires along with our current policies. Considering all the constraints that the lot has, you know, easements, the turnaround, you know, private streets, the slope, encroachments, you know, whatever it happens to be, you know, it's a bit of a challenge, and so I certainly appreciate the effort there. You're a community resident, you live not too far from this area, so you're familiar with it, you've probably driven past it 1,000 times, wondering, could I ever do this? And so, you know, appreciate the effort that you're going through. But again, thanks to the staff for kind of outlining the things, Mr. Bustle even, you know, bringing up some good insights for us. What appears to be a fairly benign project, and I know, that's why I asked Ms. Leopold, the only reason it's here is because of the encroachment to the slope, as Mr. Lanson pointed out. But as you know, when it comes to planning commission, we have lots of questions, so I appreciate your tolerance of that and for the insight for the staff and the commissioners on doing that. So with that, please vote.
Motion passed, 4-0.
Thank you for coming tonight and for being part of this. This is a public hearing. There is a 10-day appeal process. If you care to submit appeal, please do so to the Community Development Director. And otherwise, thanks for coming tonight. We'll move on to the rest of our agenda. Next, we have Community Development Department reports and referrals. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, thank you. Planning Commission agenda is, as you look at the, your agenda, the next week, actually, is our next Planning Commission meeting on December 11th. We have a case which has been processing through for a while. It's the Verizon Wireless Facility out at, at one of the water tanks out in the Dos Fiantos Ranch area off of Villa El Cero. That's the one item as far as a public hearing. And then also that evening, I will be presenting a, kind of a recap as far as the work that the Planning Commission has accomplished over the year of 2017, kind of a rehash of the cases where they went, follow-up as far as some of the policy direction that the commission looked at, and also some of the general plan amendments that you dealt with also. So we'll give a kind of a recap of the year. And then, looking forward, it's interesting, we don't have any items set up so far this upcoming year, but I believe there's actually going to be a couple that'll be popping up on the January 22nd hearing sooner than later, so probably next meeting you'll start seeing that populated with additional cases. Moving on, as far as for council update, the, actually, at your last meeting, when you gave a recommendation to the city council as far as the municipal code amendment, to amend Thousand Oaks Municipal Code to establish zoning classifications and regulatory regulations for medical cannabis retail, that was actually reviewed by this body on October 23rd, with a recommendation going to the city council. City Council held the hearing on November 14th and approved the municipal code amendment. And just recently, the October 28th meeting for the city council, council had their second reading, which was passed, you know, on November 28th at their meeting. Just a little information item, tomorrow night at the city council meeting will be the annual council reorganization. And also during the day will be the State of the City speech this year held at the, at Cal Lutheran University. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Next is minutes and resolutions. Do I have any adjustments to the minutes or resolution, or do I have a motion to approve? Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to add and/or change, so we'll go ahead and just make a motion for the approval of minutes and resolutions from our Planning Commission meeting of October 23rd, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Pletcher. Seeing no other comments, if you would please proceed with voting.
Motion passed, 4-0.
Just for clarification, Mr. Lanson, were you present at our last meeting?
Yep, give a second vote.
Could you prepare us for another vote, please? Madam Recording Secretary? We'll have another vote. Please vote again.
Motion passed, 3 to 1, with Commissioner Lanson opposed. Abstained. I'm sorry, I can't.
Just for the record, it was 3-0 approval with one abstention.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Recording Secretary. Next is AB 1234, reports pursuant to the city council resolution 2006-005. Each commissioner shall report on meetings attended at city expense. The reports may be verbal or written. Do we have any reports this evening? I hear none. Next, we go to commission comments. Have any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a request for our next meeting, Mr. Shepherd, when you're doing your year-end review, I had sent Mr. Gilly an email recently, just wanting to follow up from our September 11th meeting about the Oak Brook Center. We had a num, not a number, but we had a few residents come out and express some concerns involving noise and involving whether Oak Brook Center and the adjacent center are really abiding by the hours of operation and really making sure that they're coming and going and delivering at a proper hour. So I don't know where Mr. Gilly is on responding to that email or following up on that, but if I could get requests that, you know, that be addressed or at least touched on where the city is, if the city needed to, you know, just to reassure some of our residents regarding the Oak Brook Center, I'd certainly be appreciative.
Okay, just to follow up to what we heard before, I think, I know all of us were invited to the luncheon tomorrow with the State of the City address, so I think everyone's planning to go there, from what I understand, so I'll look forward to joining you all there and then hopefully at the reorganization meeting tomorrow night. And the public is welcome to attend that meeting tomorrow night. And with that, with nothing else, I will go ahead and adjourn to December 11th, which is next Monday. Good evening, Thousand Oaks.